This allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, first order of business is the election of officers. So could I open, could I have a motion to open nominations from the floor? All right. Uh nominate, opens the motion and Ella seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Okay. First nomination would be for chairperson.
Kevin Seitani speaking. I would like to nominate Mark Kulos for chairman of the next or for the new term on the Board of Education.
Okay.
Greg Perry, I'll second.
Okay. Uh any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? Okay. All in favor of Mark Kulos being nominated?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And uh I guess we'll vote on that. In front of you, you have the, the chairperson and you have to give your signature.
I have one.
Okay. Yeah, I've got right here. Okay, the next officer will entertain motions for the nomination of vice chairperson.
Greg Perry. I nominate John Iavino for vice chair.
And I will second that nomination. Do I have any other nominations for vice chairperson?
I want to nominate Heather Hopper for vice chairman.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I guess I'll second myself.
Okay. Uh any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Okay. All in favor? Oh no, that's, okay, we've got the two nominations, okay. So then we vote on either John or Heather then for. And the final position would be for secretary. So do we have any nominations from the floor for secretary?
I nominate um our incumbent, Ms. Carley. Because I think that she's the only one equipped with the talent to keep up. I could never do that, I don't, no way. Barely write fast enough.
Kevin Seitani, I will second.
Okay, and do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and vote. Okay, if we could, Greg, you want to collect the ballots and then give them to Amber to count?
Okay, so for chair, we have Mark Kulos, vice chair John Iavino, and secretary Carleen Sharpe.
Okay, very good.
Congratulations.
So now that concludes our election of officers. Uh let's go into approval of minutes for the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Do I have a motion?
Kevin Seitani, I will approve the minutes from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-third.
And do we have a second?
No second, yes.
Okay, other seconds? Uh any changes, discussion? Okay, all in favor of the approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. All right, now we go into a report of the chairperson. And firstly, I'd like to thank the board for electing me as your chair for the next two years. And also John as vice chair and Carleen as secretary. I hope we will live up to your expectations. It's my pleasure to welcome our new board members, Ella, Chris, and John. Please don't be overwhelmed, you will be. And the learning curve is long, because this is a complex organization with many moving parts. Just be good, listeners. Read the material as it's presented to you and ask questions of other board members in the chair if you don't understand anything. No questions are too crazy or insignificant. Sometimes it's the perspective of new members to catch something that others might miss. Voters had confidence in you to elect you to be stewards of their tax dollars and their children's futures. Have confidence that you will do a good job and it will happen. Uh I have here a committee sign-up list, which I'll pass around. There are some blank spaces here, fill them in. You'll notice that some of the committee assignments have party affiliations associated with, with them. This is to spread representation in a fair manner. Beyond today, we will work as a body, not for political interest, but for what is best for the children. Your first five concerns should always be, how does this help the children? Follow this rule and we will be a successful board. We will encounter problems and we have lingering problems to solve. If we work together in a civil and respectful manner, we can solve those problems. Sometimes we will not be happy uh where am I? With what we need to do and hard decisions will happen. That is the nature of life. I ask that we proceed this term by showing respect. I will always listen to your concerns, but I don't respond to shouting or ill manners. Please remember that our only power is acting as a voting body together, where a majority vote rules. Also, the sole spokesperson for this board is the chair. We can craft complicated messages together and everyone's input will be welcomed and appreciated. Our respect must be given to the staff, students, parents, and the community. We will act in an open, transparent, and professional manner. We will prove their trust in us every time we meet or interact with the public. Finally, I wish to acknowledge the eleventh anniversary of the Sandy Hook tragedy that occurred on December fourteenth. Let us honor the memory of those twenty-six angels who watch over us by taking a moment of silence. And let's proceed with the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Start off with the recognition awards. Key is me, teacher award recipient, went to Lisa Higgins. She's a speech and language pathologist at Veterans and Huntington. Lisa juggles a large casehold, caseload and works collaboratively to implement speech services daily to her children. She is often the first contact for families in the community when concerns arise about a child's development. Lisa is consistently patient and kind and explains the entire process while welcoming families into the folds of the Norwich Public Schools. Her practice is rooted in a rich understanding of child development and a genuine care for the children and families within the community. Norwich Public Schools is lucky to have her, congratulations to Lisa. The I D difference support staff award recipient is Karen Ash, a parent educator at Stanton School. Karen has been a dedicated parent professional in Norwich since two thousand seventeen. She comes to work with a smile each day and makes a difference in the lives of all the students she works with. Karen will support in any way that she can, her answer is always yes, no matter what the task is. Karen finds ways to make all of our students at Stanton feel special every day. Karen is positive while working with students and is always receptive to feedback. We are so thankful to have Ms. Karen at our school, she is most deserving of this award, congratulations Karen. And you inspire me student award recipient, went to Aiden Cruz of Unka School, grade five student. Please choose fifth grader Aiden Cruz for the you inspire me award. Aiden has been arriving at school on time every day this year with a smile on his face. When you walk into his classroom, you are greeted by a wave and a warm smile. He is working so hard to improve his academic abilities and continuously is kind to his peers. Aiden, we are so proud of you for your attendance improvements, but more importantly, we are just happy we get to see you more each day. He is happy engaged, he is happy engaged with learning and making leaps and bounds with his academic progress. He is also caught often thanking his teacher for all that they do for him. Congratulations, Aiden. Was submitted by Katie Ruffler. Okay, vacancies, I want to quickly go over vacancies that we have. Library teacher at Moriarty, we ju- we just filled the library at Stanton for the first time in a couple of years, so we're happy about that. But we still have one at Moriarty. The principal at La Quanic, we went through first rounds yesterday and today. And we'll be having a second rounds in a couple of days, we'll keep you updated on that. Art teacher at La Quanic and Vets, math teacher at Global, T-Soul teacher at Global. And I see PE teacher at Global, but I think that was filled, Reyna, was that filled, the PE teacher at Global? Yes, so we don't have, we only have a few vacancies at this time. Uh I'd like to recognize our, personally recognize our, the new members on the board. John Iavino, Chris Milton, and Ella Mines, welcome. I was happy to be at the city hall for the, for the presentation, so of the Board of Ed members and city council, so that was great to see. Welcome. I'm going to talk a little bit about, we're, we're going to talk about pre-K and I have Cory here, who's going to come up and do a presentation, because I know that that's important to the community, to give an update on pre-K since we had a lot to, to work with, with that and fix, and a lot to fix. Before that, I do want to talk about our recent community coffee and conversation that we had. It was to connect NPC, NPS caregivers, NPS partners, and community members, not only in providing an opportunity for questions and engagement, but also to highlight the perspectives of leadership in the community as to how we can all work together to continue to move the community in a positive direction. It went very well, I, I got this idea from Sheila Hayes, I had said that when, one of the first things I did was meet with Sheila Hayes when I became, the way I got in this position. And instead of having a superintendent's coffee, she said, why don't we have a community event? So that's when we started on this, it took us a couple of months to get together. Want to say that we had some special guests, Jarell Wilson, who everyone knows, our Connecticut State Representative in forty-sixth district. He was there as a special guest, Sheila Hayes was there, who's new to the Norwich City Council. Erin Hagan, who's the coordinator for Norwich Youth and Family Services. We also had our, some Board of Ed members were able to make it, Kevin, Greg, and John were able to make that, thank you very much. We had Norwich, Norwich Human Services, Bullybusters, I think everybody knows Deb from Bullybusters. And we also had some informational tables set up, we had United Way Mobile Food Pantry, the NPS Family Resource Center, NPS Extended Learning, NPS Early Childhood, and the UCFS School-Based Health Centers had set up some tables with information for parents. Uh we had Jamie Bender was there, Lisa Hughes was there. Amber and Chelsea were there. It was, it was just a really nice event and I think Jamie summed it up really well at the end where she said, at, I have, she said, I had goosebumps, she goes, this is, this was so nice to have everybody together and everyone spoke. And it was really, a really, a team feeling. And back to all the community people that make Norwich so great. So I, I appreciate everyone that came. We are going to have another event in February, so we'll start planning for that. We had some moms, Jess was there, so thanks for coming to that, Jess, we appreciate that. So we're looking for some feedback on that and how we can make it even better for the, for February, so thank you, everyone. So I'll go into preschool, I know that I, I feel like I'm going to overshare with Board of Ed members, I feel like for the pre-K. I've been sending information to the board just to keep them updated on that, because I know the community's been asking questions. So I'll give you a brief update on some things that are happening and then I'm going to have Cory come up and she's going to have a slideshow for you to explain what we're doing. Pre-K, we did have an informational meeting that she shared this slideshow with, so I'm going to have her come up in a minute. But spoke with her today and some things that we wanted to update, we hired two teachers and one parent recently. We're improving communication channels within the department and between the business office, registration, and nursing. Moving two classrooms over break, I sent the logistics to the Board of Ed by email so that you would all be updated on that. We're getting supplies from Bishop back into the hands of teachers, parents, and students. Two upcoming meet and greets with pre-K students that Cory's organizing. Looking into early phonics instructional program in conjunction with special education and preparing for school readiness, grant writing, accreditation, which is due in March. And with that, Cory, I'll have you come up, I think this is, that was another event that went very well. We're happy to have Mayor Nystrom at that meeting as well. And we did update it, or Cory, I should say, updated it with some questions, parents had some great questions. So we updated the slideshow with some questions and answers that parents had.
So you, you didn't mention how good the food was at the community.
It was great, would you like to talk about that, John?
I always talk about food, it's really good, so.
We did have food there, too.
Can you get me back?
I know the first one was held at nine AM, is there any plan to host an evening in the meeting composition?
Look into that, absolutely, yes. It's a feedback we're looking for, so we can see if we can get more people here if we have it at night.
Best to speak right in the microphone, Cory.
Cory, you guys.
Can I just pick it up? Yeah, I can do this. Okay. All right, you can hear me, okay.
Do you have a clicker?
Um I'm going to do it the old-fashioned one. Unless someone has a clicker. No, okay. I got it. But thank you, good evening, everybody. I'm excited to share this with you, because it is something that we've shared with the families who came to our pre-K information session, because our goal is really to get information out as accurately and as early as possible so that families can make the best decisions for their children and themselves and their schedules in the upcoming registration process, that we hope to start a little bit earlier than maybe it has started in the past, so that we can get students in early, we can know who they are, what they may need, and then meet those needs. So I am going to zoom through this a little bit, I'll stop at some important points along the way. And this is just the first of a few rounds of meet and greet sessions where we share information with families. So this was the first round. We started really just talking about schoolmen, because families of young children may have never had this experience before. So we wanted to provide the link and walk them through what that experience will be like, it's a little bit complicated. And it requires uploaded documents and things like that. So we walked them through that initial step of the registration process. We talked about some of the information that they may need, because they'll have to upload information like their pay stubs for four weeks and their ten forty form from completing their taxes. We want to plant that seed early with families that they'll need to gather this information so that they can start thinking about that ahead of time. We have been working really hard in pre-K over the last couple of weeks to really streamline our, our infrastructure, so that we know where our slots are and which schools have openings, so that when registration and enrollment comes around, we can let families know exactly where their children have the option of going to school. We've also been working with the billing department, because some of our pre-K programs are invoiced slots. So we want families to know that there may be a cost associated with the pre-K program that their child enrolls in. So we talked about placement in our slots. It's not always based on where the child lives. So we have to be very careful about balancing the needs of students with disabilities, with students who don't have disabilities, so that we can give resource to the classrooms in a most equitable way. And we talked a little bit about getting back to the notion of capping classes at about fifteen or sixteen, which gives us a little bit of leeway if we have students move in mid-year or at another unexpected point, so that we can keep that need balanced and we can meet the needs of IEPs and things like that in classrooms. We also talked about how students are often placed according to the strengths of the staff. So we may have students with significant disabilities who require a certain type of instruction and we want to make sure that they are placed in a classroom that has an adult capable of providing that instruction. We, we talked about cultural representation, so we want to make sure that languages are represented and cultures are represented, so that students and staff share those pieces. Right now, our pre-K classrooms are at Moriarty, Huntington, Mahan, and Vets. And we are moving two of the classrooms from Moriarty to Huntington, so that we can better meet the needs of all the kids that we have currently. This is the important part, where I will take a second to explain a little bit about the three choices that we have. So when parents enroll with us, they will be offered one of three slots. One is a part-day slot, it's an AM slot. It's about three hours long, two hours and forty-five minutes. And there's an AM session and a PM session. Bussing is provided. There's also a school day slot, which is the entire length of the school day. It's a tuition-based slot and is based on a sliding scale that Norwich Public Schools doesn't determine the Office of Early Childhood determines. And that is also a bust slot. And then the last one is the twelve-month program. So this is a program that runs all year round. And we staff that program from seven AM to five PM. And we let parents know that they're able to drop their child off a half an hour before the, the start of their workday and then pick them up a half an hour after the end of their workday. So it's not that children stay for ten hours, but the program is open for ten hours to help accommodate working families. That allot thirty minutes each way for the family to travel to work, but transportation is not provided. This is one of the programs that we have now, where there are the most openings. We're actually working right now on vaccinations in health records, particularly the flu shot, because pre-K children are required to have the flu shot. And if they don't have it by January first, then on January second, they are not allowed to come to school until they get the flu shot. So we are working together with our, our nursing supervisor, Laura Dietrich, to make sure that all of this information is coming in and coordinated by the administrative assistant in the Early Childhood Office. So as you can imagine, there were many questions when the families were here and they were all really good questions. I don't have the, the FAQ that we made to answer some of those, but they asked a lot of really good questions, such as, is breakfast and lunch provided? They asked a lot of questions about potty training, do kids need to be potty trained in order to come to school? So we did put together a frequently asked question sheet and we're sharing that out with the families, too. So this is step one. There will be a couple of meet and greets, we're going to do one virtually, we'll do one in person, one in the morning, one in the evening, to try to make it as accessible as possible for families to come in. We're opening it up to parents of existing pre-K students, but also parents who have a student coming up into pre-K. Because what we learned from the community conversation is that parents are planning ahead. And we did have parents of very young children, even babies in some cases, two-year-olds definitely, who want the information. So we want to make sure that we get it out to them. Welcome.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Cory. Would I can move from Moriarty to Huntington? Is it just a couple of classrooms or the entire program?
It's a couple of classrooms. Well, this took into account several different variables. But what we did was, when all of the pre-K classes moved to Moriarty, there really were six classrooms that they were hoping to have at Moriarty. Fire Marshal suggested that that can't be the case. So we had to condense two of the twelve-month programs. So the four twelve-month classrooms condensed into two twelve-month classrooms. And then we had the, the school day and the part day. So what we're doing now is pulling the part day and the school day to Huntington. And that has to do with the slots that we were approved for at the specific location. So we're pulling those to, to Huntington, because we have space for them there, which will allow.
Which will allow us to open the twelve-day programs back into four at Moriarty and fill those with our students. So the space allocation lets us be compliant, but it also lets us open more slots for kids in Norwich.
Okay, and then you also mentioned the flu vaccine. Are they also required to have other vaccinations, say the MMR or?
Yes, I think that, yeah, they are. What we realize right now, because the flu timeline is crunch time right now. We have about a hundred and twenty families left to be vaccinated before January first. And of course, they have the other vaccinations too, but it's the flu that's most pressing at this point.
And that's a state requirement?
Yes.
Just wanted to, thank you Cory. Follow up on what Mark just said. So the ones that are waiting on vaccinations, they're not allowed in the program till they have them, right? Thank you.
We're trying to spread the word. We've, Laura Dietrich makes contact with the families weekly through either Parents Square. She does translated letters, phone calls, emails. And, but we're still missing for a hundred and twenty, so that's a big number and we have a short amount of time to get that completed.
I just have some, and that's in top. What is that coordination with, with our School Days Health Center? Because I know we do have those in place right now.
We have, we've given resources so that families know that they can go there. Laura also coordinated several flu shot clinics where some families were able to come in and get their flu shot. Without having to coordinate with their primary or their pediatrician.
Are they more being scheduled over the next couple of?
I believe so, but I'd have to get that specifically for you.
Thank you. Um, I had another question in terms of how many students can be freely accommodating and the three options that you heard earlier.
We're about, wait, well, we have three hundred and seventeen total spots when you combine, combine all four locations and all three programs. And we're about half full at this point in time.
So, is registration rolling or is there a deadline for parents to register their kids?
The registration will open in January of this year so that families can hop into that schoolment link. And start to accumulate all of the verifications that they'll need with income and things like that. We will get into somewhat of a hangup though, considering the new mandate for starting kindergarten at five years old by September first. So in the past, we allowed students to come in if they were turning three by May first. But now we may need to reconsider that to be three by September first. So that we don't end up with a strange three or four month time period where they're not eligible yet for kindergarten.
And how long is registration open to?
Registration will open in January for next year, but then yes, it is on a rolling basis.
And how do you determine which program slot the child gets in?
So many different factors. Some of the factors that we mentioned in terms of the students' needs, the number of IEPs, we try to really keep it balanced. Have no more than fifty percent of students in that classroom with IEPs. We try to accommodate the parents' wishes, they always want the students to go to homeschool, school that they'll be going to in kindergarten. Not always possible based on the spots that are available. Plus because we have to remain in compliance to the school readiness requirement piece too. So there, there are probably eight or so different factors that come into play when we look at where the student is placed.
And when is the, the school readiness grant due by?
When is it due by?
Yeah, March.
In March. Our part goes to our school readiness liaison in March.
Okay.
And then she has, I believe, one more month to complete it.
And will it have to come to us to be approved? Uh, that's a good question. By now.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you. So, as you can see, we're super fortunate to have Cory Beckwith on our team, so thank you Cory. We're moving in the right direction for, um, for the pre-K. It'll just get better from here with Cory, so we appreciate Cory. So I'm gonna talk a little about, about food services in a second. Before that, I just wanna just talk about some events and meetings that I've attended, I know it's on the board docs. I will say that I'm getting around to make sure that I'm getting to schools where all of our kids attend and building relationships such in NFA. At Integrated Charter School, also at Norwich Tech. And I continue, I will continue to get around to where all our kids go and build relationships and, and work with them for resources and. So, I really appreciate the principals of those schools to take me on these tours and I'm seeing a lot of great things, so I appreciate that. I'm just trying to support NFA things just such as being on, at the spelling bee, which was very stressful. I didn't realize I would have to be looking up every single word in the dictionary, so, but it was a lot of fun and there's some good things happening in all schools, not just in Norwich Public Schools, so appreciate that. Just give an update on the food services, I know there were some issues that we had with some kids running out of food at the middle school. Jamie and I went after that to visit, talk with the kids, talk with Turtwells. We seem to be going in the right direction with that. We had a meeting, called for a meeting with Bob and Jamie and I met with the management of Turtwells. Explained our concerns to them and Heather and I are gonna team up to make sure that we stay on top of that. Heather and I are gonna be at Kelly on Thursday during the lunch waves, just to talk with the kids and, you know, see where everything's going with them. So Heather and I will continue to partner up to rely on things and make sure that everything's going in the right direction. So I appreciate Heather supporting that move. And that's it for my report.
Very good, uh, any questions for the superintendent?
Susan, I was just wondering if, how are we doing with the high school applications? Would someone be able to respond to that? Since our kids, where are our kids in that process now? Our eighth graders? Because I know some of the surrounding towns.
I know that it's starting, I know that we're doing it and there's some things happening. I know in January there's deadlines for the middle school and I believe it's the same for the high schools, Sarah Dusso has shaken her head yes in the middle.
That's what I was wondering.
We started early.
Have they had tours already, Sarah? Have they had tours already? Like a tech?
They have gone to NFA, I know that, so there's been a lot of NFA.
But the tech schools they have too. Very good question. No, I, I knew it was starting, so I was wondering, thank you.
Yeah, you need to say, the open house a couple of weeks.
We've been having them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the board of the assistants attending, Jamie.
Okay. Again, I'd like to welcome our new board members officially today. Well, I'm glad you're here. Norwich needs people that are dedicated to our, our cause, so we appreciate all your efforts. You have my report, but I want to capitalize on some highlights that I've experienced over this past month. One of which was having a, a great meeting with Norwich Youth and Family Services with Kate Noldy and Erin Hagan, who's a Norwich Youth and Family Services. We got together because we wanted to share what we were doing in our schools and they wanted to share what they were doing out in the community. And talk about our past relationships and partnerships that we've had. Hoping to rekindle the collaboration that we've had for so many years. One of those things has been involving in, in our after-school programs, our summer programming. And, and currently, they hadn't been doing that this year. So we were really glad to get together and talk about some of the things that they can do for, for us. One of the things that we're really excited about is a before-school program that we're, they're piloting on our behalf and, at Uncas School. Where they're kind of taking the lead in, in finding staff to support our families in that before-school care option. Again, it's a pilot and we're gonna work with like twenty families to see if, if it's supporting the needs of, of Uncas. And then working out the kinks and the logistics and we hope to expand that as time goes on. So we're really excited about that. Later on, in the early, late winter, early spring, where there's a possibility of enhancing our after-school programming with Norwich Youth and Family Services. So that's another, a great thing that we're gearing up for. Another group I had the pleasure of joining is the New Capacities Group. Where many Norwich stakeholders are getting together to talk about how we can help our families achieve a financially stable, stable household. And I've had two meetings so far and lots of dedicated people are coming around trying to determine what is it that our families need? In order to have stability in their household. One of the key findings of that work has been that our families need workforce supports. And childcare is a significant expense and it kind of goes back to circles with, you know, Cory's presentation with our pre-K. And my first meeting was like, how, you know, what can we do about after-school program, what can we do about before-school programming? And we know that it is a significant expense and the statistics show that about eighty-two percent of our female-led households that have children. Are living in that financially difficult area. So, you know, we thought, you know, what, what is it that we can do to support that? And I think that pilot at Uncas is, is, you know, is a, is a first step. But another way is our school readiness program. And as you heard from Cory, we're about halfway filled and we have about seventy-two slots of full-day, full-year opportunities for our families. And, you know, it's seven to, seven to five, oh, those are the hours. But what we're finding is that even though we have that many slots, only half of them are filled. And this is the second year in, in a row that it's been only about halfway filled to the, the maximum capacity. And I learned through registration that families are calling and they might be interested in that, in that slot. But even still, the sliding scale that, oh, the Office of Early Childhood developed, it's still too high. They're not able to, they're not able to accept that slot and they want something different that's more affordable. So, that's something that we have to look at. So, with that through line, we had that great community conversation session where again, we're all coming together to try to figure out how to best support our community. And I, I raised a point with Norwich Youth, Norwich Youth and Services about that challenge that we're having. And with these conversations, we're able to find resources that, you know, we may not have known that were there for our families. And so really, our next step is to provide some of the things that, that they can provide, like childcare subsidies. Maybe, you know, the school readiness slot, the sliding scale isn't meeting their needs. But perhaps they can get some heating or housing subsidies that may support them so that they can afford the school readiness. So, all of these things are kind of like working together. But we need to educate our parents, our families, that these resources may be out there for them. And we need to do that at the registration process and that's what we're kind of working on next. So again, I, I really appreciate the, the collaboration of all these different organizations that have that same passion and initiative to, to bring our community together and, and support our families. Any questions about that part?
New, new capacities, have they been into the middle schools at all yet, talking with kids about career options and?
I don't know if they've been there yet, but I know that was something that was discussed. I've only been, I've only, I, I've been to one stakeholder session that happened at NFA and then I've been to a more, it was a whole group work, working session. To kind of look at, at what's the, what's the, you know, the root of why is this happening, why, why in Norwich? And that's a, that's a big lift, lots of information and ideas are shared. But I really am enjoying that, that, that organization and the dedication that so many people have. Um, so, one of the other highlights is the acquisition of some grants. After some revisions, we, required by the State Department. After they made their initial reviews from the grants that were submitted earlier. We were awarded network entitlement grants of fifty thousand dollars each for our middle schools. And it's really to formulate a plan on how, you know, what our effort's going to be to turn around our, our schools to ensure that our students are achieving at the rates in which we, we believe. We were also awarded competitive grants after some revisions again, which is two hundred and thirty-six thousand for our middle schools. For specifically school improvement initiatives. Again, we work closely with our State Department consultants, you know, that, you know, we're proposing some really concrete initiatives. That are evidence-based, that all have high yield outcomes. So, we're really looking forward to that hard work and we're glad to have those resources to help us do it. Just want to remind the board that with these grants, we cannot supplant those funds, we have to use them for new initiatives. And, you know, I, I applaud the state for really making sure that we're telling that line. Other areas of focus, I know that you have a report from Adult Ed, but I know it's been something that has been concerning to the board with the availability of our English for speakers of other languages. John Glover's done excellent job at, at opening up another classroom for about twenty-five. And that's current, and then there's plans to open a few more by the beginning of the year. So that's really great news for Norwich. It's not easy to find people to, to staff those, but he's doing it and I appreciate his initiative with that. That's all I have, any questions for me?
Yes, Jamie, in the Adult Ed report, I, I noticed some impressive figures. That there were three hundred and sixty-two students registered for one hour or more. And we have a waiting list of two hundred and thirty students. I mean, that is nearly six hundred adult learners who want to attend Norwich. And, do, do you know if it's mainly language programs or?
As far as the programs I just mentioned, those are all for English for speakers of other languages, those ones I mentioned. So, one now and three additional coming soon.
Wow. So that's the, the real demand is that.
Yeah.
Looking to learn English.
It was also great to have John at that New Capacities meeting because we know that, you know, workforce supports are important. And, and of course, our Adult Ed program can definitely help with that, with that lift. So I was glad to see John representing the Norwich Adult Regional Education System.
I have a question.
Sure.
Not included in your report, and thank you for, yeah, great. I'm seeing the curriculum updates that include the assessment and so forth, but I'm not seeing the stats in terms of like how our students are doing. I don't know if you have that or if you can turn it to us.
I can send that to you.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything that you want to see that is of interest or important, please let me know. I mean, we have tons of information and data and trying to know what exactly you all want to see. I'd be happy to put in there whatever you're looking for.
If you want to be buried in paperwork, they can provide it, don't worry.
I mean, it's great to have the process, but I want to see what we have come up with.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, any other questions? All right.
Christine, Christine, another question.
It's just about our regular school attendance.
Is that in there?
How are we doing?
Well, we're making improvements.
Equity director.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's in the Equity Director Report, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions for Jamie? All right, let's move on to the Director of Student Services, Lisa.
Good evening, this is new with the microphone, I like it. So just to highlight a couple of things in this month's report. As you know, we have students who are transferring out of the district to have IEP supports, as well as students who are newly registered in Norwich. And that gives you the, the numbers of back and forth, just to give you some totals. I wanted also to highlight our Norwich Transition Academy. I love visiting. I love visiting over there. I went last week and as you may know, our program is for 18 to 22-year-olds. We've had that change in regulation where students can stay through the end of the school year when they turn age 22. Currently, our enrollment is 29 students and they work within the program on a variety of vocational and daily living skills and they're in the community as well. The facility, you know, it really facilitates a smooth transition into the workforce and thinking about from the transition from high school into becoming an engaged and active adult in the community. So it's really wonderful work that's happening there. Currently, we have students at Mohegan Sun working with the banquet staff, with job coaches. And they, Mr. DuFort reported and gave me some pictures of students of ours who were building the gingerbread house at Mohegan. So it was really wonderful to see. They're very engaged in their learning on the job. They're at places like Chick-fil-A, Papa Gino's, and we have them integrated into our Chartwell's work in our caf, in our school cafeterias. So that's really great as well. We are going to have a community information night, much like we did last year, but we're hoping to push up the date to March so that we have a higher attendance, thinking that, you know, families might be thinking along those lines of what's happening after high school for my student a little bit later in the year. And then in addition to that, I put in a graphic just to give you kind of a snapshot of some of the main things that are happening in Student Services right now. We are in a good place with staffing and programming. We are looking to increase perhaps some in-district programming for students that may be ready to come back from out-of-district placements or may need a more specialized placement in district. So we are working on that cost and looking at what we would need to make that happen. In addition to that, what our specially-designed instruction looks like. So, you know, I reported last month on some of the multisensory reading techniques and phonics and phonemic awareness, like Wilson reading, for example, the letters program. We're investigating those things and getting training in those programs for our students across the district. And then just to update you on our de-escalation training, we have nearly 140 individuals trained in that program, which is a great de-escalation program with our trainers who are our BCBAs, our Board Certified Behavior Analysts. We've had an increase in positive and restorative practices and in student reflections across the district with that initiation of safety care. So I'm very happy with that. And we're going to be offering a safety care for families to engage families in the kind of work and bridge what we're doing in school to help them at home. So we're looking forward to, in working with families on that. So we are continuing working with our parents with a purpose, which is our Parents Group, a very active group and really doing some wonderful outreach there. We will have a March NTA night. Our Wellness, Autism Wellness Fair will be in April and we are working on Unified Sports. Registration is up and running and we're looking forward to getting both middle schools engaged in Unified Sports. So wanted to give you that. Quick update, but happy to answer any questions. And like Jamie said, if you have any specific demographics or anything that you would like to know about special education, shoot me an email, let me know, and I'm happy to provide that as well.
Now, with the change in rules now, do you believe the NTA is going to be doing a group graduation at the end of the year? They have, you know, the last couple of years that the rules were changed.
Yes.
As soon as they aged out, they were, they were gone.
Yes, that was one of the first things that Mr. DuFort talked about. He said it's really going to be wonderful to be able to have that event. So we're looking forward to that for sure.
Excellent. Any other questions for Lisa? All right. That brings us to the report of the Business Administrator.
Good evening. In addition to the information that's in your packet, I do have a short data presentation on food services that I'll be sharing with you. If you want hard copies of that, I'll be glad to email it to you. But before I start with my narrative, I want to share a good story. It involves Darrell Wilson, who, as you know, was a former city council member and is now our state representative. Darrell's been involved in the City of Norwich and youth programs for many, many years and he's continued that, working with the Norwich Youth Football League. So if I misspeak, I'm going to ask Darrell to correct me. And if you have questions that I can't answer, I'll lean on Darrell. Darrell secured a grant for the cheerleading program that's associated with the Youth Football League. If you're familiar with the field, it's located on Hamilton Avenue down in the, by the river, down, down the hill there. So Darrell came to see me, Lou Allen, and our Facilities Director. The cheerleading program needed the use of a gym. So we were more than glad to help him out and a lot of the cheerleaders that are involved in his program are also cheerleading, cheerleaders on the program that Lou Allen started. So he needed a gym from September through December, so we were able to secure him the use of the Huntington Gym five nights a week. So we must have very talented cheerleaders because a week or two ago, like two weeks ago, got an email that they won the states and they were moving on to the regionals. So they asked if they could, we could find time for them to use a gym again, because it was past the December. So we were able to accommodate them as best we could. And Darrell informed me tonight that they won regionals and now they've been invited to go to the nationals. I believe that's in New Jersey somewhere. So I think that's a great example of community members and leaders working with the school district and the city to have our buildings be used by the community. So I think that was a good story and I thought I'd start with that. So if you have any questions, I'd throw them at Darrell and myself, but congratulations to that program. Okay, so now I'm going to get into some financial stuff and I'm sure, I hope it doesn't put you to sleep. The 2223 audit is being concluded now. That's work on that started in the summertime. Board of Ed and the city share the same audit firm, so it minimizes expenses and we work collectively with them. So that report by state statute is due December 31st unless they ask for an extension. And it appears that they should be able to file it on time, so we're almost done with that. So hopefully that'll be the last you'll hear about 2223. Regarding the current year budget, it seems that we're trending towards having a significant budget deficit at the end of the year. A long time ago in my corporate work career, I learned that if you find something wrong, you can't sit back and hope it fixes itself because it never will. It'll just get worse. So we had, at our cabinet meeting this week, we decided to implement a budget freeze effective this past Monday to try and mitigate the deficit towards year end. So letters went out to all the administrative staff regarding that. At this point, it could exceed a million dollars, but it's still early to tell. What we are doing in the process now is we're balancing all expenses between all of our operating funds. We have the Board of Ed budget, we have the Alliance Grant Funds, and we have ESSER Funds. So where we can move money around, we're doing that to the best of our ability. Some of the areas of concern are the impact of new legislation related to special education, where we're required now to educate our students that turn 22 to the end of the school year. Previously, it was just till their birthdate. So if you had a student, say, who turned 22 in July or August, you were done financing the education on their birthday. Now, under the new legislation, you are responsible till the end of the school year. So that alone added about $350,000 of unbudgeted expenses. We have some unbudgeted software that was previously grant-funded, that is no longer grant-funded. Our transportation expenses are high, higher than expected, and we have some outside professional costs in other areas. We do have some potential for some budget savings. One area of particular importance is the excess cost grant reimbursement. You've heard me speak to that many times. I call it a financial roulette. That's a very high-budget risk item. When we put together our budget, we take all the students we know of who are in our student population. And the way this system works, if you have your outplacements, any cost that exceeds four and a half times your net cost per pupil, you get reimbursed for by the state. Original legislation called for 100% reimbursement, but the state never had enough money. Last year, they went to a tiered approach where they broke the state into three different regions or tiers. We fell into the top tier and we were supposed to get 91% reimbursement. That's what we built into the budget this year was 91% reimbursement based on the students we knew of or anticipated. So you've got those two risk factors. One is, will your student population be the same during the year that you budgeted for back in January? And then will the state have enough money to fully reimburse you? Last year, we were supposed to be in the 91% category, but they have those words in there, subject to the appropriation. So statewide, special ed costs for high-cost students rose by 16%, so they didn't have enough money to give us our 91% and we got ratcheted back to 79%. So that caused us last year to have a $550,000 shortfall, which impacted our deficit. Based on what we submitted, if we received the $91,000, we could potentially be about $200,000 better in our budget. But we won't know that until February, when we get an indication. At the end of February, the state distributes 75% of your expected payment. And then in May, you know for sure how much you're going to get. So I'm hopeful that we don't get shortchanged and we do get more than that's in the budget. And that, if that happens, then that'll reduce the expected deficit. We also don't know high-cost items like heating. Fortunately, this year, NPU was able to secure lower heating costs. So in theory, our heating cost should be 40% less than what's in the budget. Again, that's dependent on weather, too. So we have areas that this might not be at as bad as is, but we felt it was better to do a budget freeze now and then in February, March, if circumstances arise, you can always lift it or become a little looser on the strings, but if we needed to take action then. Oftentimes, now moving away from the budget, if you look at your year-to-date budget report this year, this month, you'll see under payroll, some encumbered monies. Mr. Coolow's often asked about encumbrances. So you've heard me speak about in the past how munis, our financial system, we bought several modules that are not in use. One, a couple of that are included in that group are the Position Control Module, payroll encumbrances, budgeting and forecasting. Payroll's been working very hard to implement those modules and it's kind of like flying the plane and fixing it at the same time, so it's very time-consuming. But to give you an idea how valuable that is, when I forecast certified salaries manually by downloading information, dumping it into Excel spreadsheets, just to do the certified staff, takes me a full day or someone else. Using payroll encumbrances, it's automatic. So we're about 95% accurate now on the encumbrances, but I'll just remind you that the system is driven by metrics and formulas and it's very accurate. It's not artificial intelligence. So when I'm reviewing the implementation of this segment, I might find that we have, say, 40 certified line items, 35 of them are perfect. You know, the payroll number matches mine within 10 cents or a dollar, so it's wonderful. But on three or four or five of them, I have to put management influence in there because I know of things that you can't build into the computer to make adjustments, so on and so forth. So that's going to be very helpful. I can't wait probably when this is all implemented and I can fully utilize the system. We've also started work on the 2425 budget at the cabinet level and we've distributed information to the individual principals at the building level. Our initial focus is on the salary budget, transportation, tuition and special education as these are the big drivers. So with that, that ends my financial piece. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them before I move on to the food service
Any questions for Bob so far?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to jump to food service and if I need help, I'm going to call on Matt. Just want to get rid of the stuff on the side. Thank you. So this is raw data and it's financial data strictly related to the school lunch program, which is breakfast and lunch. If you notice, it compares this year through the end of November, we have had three operating months to last year. If you notice, this year, we, because of the school calendar, we've only had 56 serving days versus 59 serving days. The reason the financial data is important is we're not a profit center where we want to make as much money as we can, but we want to make sure that we're sustainable and self-funded so we don't have to rely on any Board of Education funding. The state actually has rules in there at your year-end financial report where your cash on hand can't exceed three months' operating expenses, so they monitor that fairly closely. If you look, we've had three fewer serving days or school days this year. So if you convert that to a revenue per day, we've been getting, this is 100% reimbursement. This isn't any money from students because Norwich is 100% free. We've been generating $16,530 a day versus $16,103 a day. So that's roughly an increase of 2.7%. So from a financial standpoint, that's a good thing. We're not, we didn't decrease in terms of revenue from the switch-over. And this is for the entire district. This isn't by school. So we just looked at lunches served per day this year compared to last year. So it's by month, September, October and November. So overall, combined for the three months, we've been serving 108 more lunches per day or there's been a 4.2% increase district-wide. Now, this doesn't differentiate between middle school, elementary school. So it's increased each month. From September, it was only 44 more per day. Now it's up to 161 per day. And if I looked at total enrollment, I looked it up before I came tonight, there's a difference of two students in December versus last year. Enrollment changes every month, so when I do this in the future, we try to equate it to an enrollment-based and take attend, absences into attendance. So basically, overall, a general statement that one could make is more students are eating lunch than last year. So if we look at breakfast, it's not quite the same story. September, we had fewer students eating. November, more. Overall, there's a 1% change. So at a 1% differential one way or the other, there's been very little change overall in the total student population on terms of eating breakfast. The only difference in the breakfast menu, last year was 100% cold breakfast. This year, there's a hot option as well. So I would have expected to see an increase in that, but we haven't seen that. What we chose to do this time was focus on the two middle schools and do a little bit of a comparison. And in my simple mind, in terms of a middle school student, in terms of eating, I don't know if there's a difference between a Kelly middle school student and a Global middle school student. You know, we think in terms of liking the food. Maybe there is, maybe it's a different makeup of student background, maybe different demographics. I don't know. But we looked at Kelly first and overall, Kelly has had a 6.5% increase in the number of lunches served per day. If I go to Global, though, there's been a really big increase. Now, Global's student population has increased on average by about 50 students per month. At Kelly, there was about a change in population, about 10. So I would expect Global logically would, if you have 50 more students and 80% of them eat on a month, you'd be seeing at least 40 more kids per, per day eating, but it's almost double that number. So more kids are eating at Global. And, you know, right now, we have no idea why. This, this is just pure raw data. This is just pure raw data. So I think that's a good thing, that more students eating. This is breakfast. Kelly, the numbers for breakfast have actually declined. And we don't know why. We've ruled out the menu because the cold option is still present, so students can eat. If I-- and that's a little disturbing because our goal was to feed as many students as we possibly can. If we look at Global, though, we've had a huge increase. I mean, it's up 43% compared to last year in terms of the number of breakfasts. And in my mind, that makes no sense. I mean, why would a Global student eat way more breakfasts, participate than a Kelly student? So we're starting to meet with the principals to figure out. We've gone to observe. And it could be come down to three or four basic things. I know at Global, the students arrive, all the buses arrive and come in through the cafeteria. And you have a very limited time for breakfast. This isn't like lunch where you sit and eat. You grab your breakfast and go. So at Global, because the cafeteria is smaller and they can't sit there, the students come, I watch them, they come right off the bus, take their breakfast and go. And that might be one reason. Because at Kelly, I believe the students come in at least two different locations. So we might need to move a breakfast cart up at the other locations. And at Kelly, they eat within the cafeteria. And even though it's the same window of time, maybe one school has more time to eat than the other. We don't know that yet. We're in the process of investigating that when we meet with the administrators. And I know when I'm at Global, you all know Greg Blasi, the assistant principal. When I'm at Global, I want to eat breakfast because Greg has the microphone saying breakfast, breakfast, breakfast. He's reminding the students to eat. And maybe that's a factor, too. Maybe more students are aware of it, but that's something we're going to be looking at. So one of our, we have a lot of goals in the food service program. And this is a very simplistic way. We want to feed as many students as possible, the most nutritious and best-tasting food. But we have to stay within the food service programs. We also want to try to increase breakfast district-wide. And talking with the administrators, if you're a student who comes in and doesn't eat breakfast, and we don't know if they eat at home or not, and you're not eating till lunch till noon time, you might not be a happy student. You could be grumpy and irritable because you really want to eat and you haven't had something to eat yet. So see, these are some of the steps that we're taking to try and make the food service program be as good as it can. We found that communication is often a problem everywhere, not only in our daily lives. So we're working to improve communication between students, staff and families. We want to make sure that students know what's available to them and that staff knows. We don't want any student to go hungry. If for some reason someone can't eat, the chef at the school will make something for them. We don't want anyone to go home. That should never happen. But maybe an administrator didn't know that, or maybe a student didn't know that. We know we had one student who didn't know there was a vegetarian or a salad option when we asked. They didn't know that. So we're sending a survey out to the students at the middle school. It went out, Food Service sent it out. And I'm going to share a couple of the results from you. We just, there's almost 1,000 middle school students. We've only gotten back 150 responses. It's a six-question survey and it's very simple and basic. So we've worked, met with the Kelly administrators here. We haven't been to Global yet. And they're working on emails, student announcements and things like that to make students aware. Matt Wazek is putting monitors in the cafeteria to make visible more options and things like that. We're also creating food service advisory committees, one for each school. We looked at doing it at middle school and elementary, but logistically, that wouldn't work because how would students get from Stanton to come to Moriarty? So we're going to have one committee at each school this year and see how it goes. It'll consist of, we want to get two parents, staff members, administrator and two students. The focus is going to be on menu planning. So the invitations will be going out this month and we'll have our first meetings in January. So we're hopeful that we'll learn something as far as what the students like. So I just want to share a couple. I don't want to bore you or get too long here, but I do have a couple examples of the questions. And I'm just going to read four or five of the responses. And we have to remember, these are middle school students. So some of the responses will be very meaningful and some you might find, I don't want to say entertaining or interesting. I think I have here. Some of the questions were, what do you like about? What foods do you like? Do you want to see? What don't you like? Why don't you eat breakfast? So on the why don't you eat breakfast one, we had, of the responses we have so far, 63 students said, I eat at home. 37 said, I do not eat breakfast. And 24 said they don't have enough time. So we're concerned about all of those, especially the, we don't, I don't have enough time, so we want to work on that one. When I was in another district, and this is a statewide problem, getting students to eat breakfast, we did a survey with the parents. And because of the low participation rate, what we learned from the mothers was, I'm going to make breakfast for my student or my child because they're so busy, especially at the middle school level. They're so busy with after-school activities. We work. It's two family working. We have fragmented dinnertime. I'm going to have that time with my child and have breakfast with them. So regardless if it's free, you're never going to get probably those 63 kids who eat at home to eat a school lunch breakfast because either mom or dad at home or grandmother or whoever is taking that time to make breakfast for their child. We had questions like this. Did you know these food options are available every day? A garden salad, vegetarian option wrap, made-to-order deli sandwich, pizza, cheeseburger, chicken patty? 120 said yes. 20 said no. So we're concerned. Why did those 20 students not know that they could have a made-to-order sandwich or they could have a garden salad? So those are the things that we want to learn from this so we can target the menu to the students because it's all about feeding the students. I'll just share a couple of the interesting food items that the kids want to see on the menu. Chicken with mashed potatoes, baked potatoes, fried bananas and meat. I thought that was kind of interesting. Mozzarella sticks was a popular thing, chicken Alfredo. Then we had some, I kind of like this student's idea. Steak lobster shrimp with good macaroni and cheese and buffalo wings. So we had a lot of, I don't care, just good food. So that's an update on food service and where we're going. And if at any time you would like to come meet with Nazam, the food service director, is an open invitation to any board member. And he'd be glad to walk you through what we're doing and trying to do. Tomorrow at the middle school, there's a program called Global Eats where they'll be having samples for food around the world. One of the goals of the food program is to make our students aware of other foods from other backgrounds where a very diverse student population. We really don't want students to eat pizza every day. So we'll look at whether that should be an option every day. So I'm done with that. If you have questions on anything at all, please feel free to ask.
I have it just so. Just a quick question. I know one of the discussion that we had is that staff were walking next door in order to get, I don't know.
Well, I can...
What does that look like now?
It's not much different right now because our focus has been feeding the students first. So when we met with Nazam and Susan, one of the, I'll say concerns or complaints from the staff is they want to have a staff menu. So Nazam, he's a perfectionist and he didn't want to do a half-baked job of doing something. So he was waiting to do a perfect staff menu. And we've basically asked him, forget about this and being perfect. Start with something basic so we can offer something good for our staff so they can be fed as well. So I think in January, he should be ready to roll that out.
For the food service advisory committees, I'm saying, like, the food, the people that actually makes the food that's missing from the advisory, I don't know if they actually attend, but it would be nice to have.
Well, they'll be, Nazam will be on all these meetings as well. So this menu planning, if someone has an idea, it might sound great to me, but I don't know all the rules and regulations with, yes, you can serve that, no, you can't, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, Bob, I know they've measured how much food they're giving out, but have they also measured how much food is being wasted? How much is being thrown away?
I don't know if he's had actual measurements. You know, the goal is not to waste any food. Share a short story with pizza at this particular school. Nazam was making 35 large pizzas. You get eight slices of pizza per, eight slices, well servings per thing. So that was, I believe, 280 pizzas. And pizza's an option every day. So it's not like in the previous, some districts where you have pizzas every Friday and that's the only day you can have pizza. So a student can get pizza basically every day. So in the last lunch wave, towards the very end, there were about eight or 10 students who didn't even get pizza. So they didn't have that. So you try to balance, should I be making 38 or 40? And you learn by doing because if you make it and they don't eat it, but it takes eight minutes to make a pizza. So if somebody wanted pizza, Nazam will make it for them, but he has to know. A teacher or a staff member would have to say, you know, student Bob or student Mark, they need to have pizza today for some reason. He'll make it if staff men, if it can be arranged because we don't want anyone to go hungry.
Yeah, because I'm thinking that, you know, the difference in percentages between Kelly and teachers, maybe there's more, you know, the food might be picked up, but maybe more food is being thrown away.
Well, the lunches, the lunches are, they're all eating in the cafeteria. So it's, and it's the serving line. They've tried different things in terms of making suggestions to students. You know, you can have pizza every day. Why don't you try beef stroganoff? Or why don't you try chicken Alfredo or whatever the menu is? And I've watched some of the servings and it's kind of interesting of, would say, fresh fruits and vegetables are unlimited. You can, you want 10 bananas, you can have 10 bananas. You can eat as much as you want. So if I'm in line and I bypass the fruits and vegetables, and they have a very attractive display, and they said to you, you know, Mark, you can get all the fruit you want. And then you go to that line. The next eight students behind Mark follow that student and get it. So it's kind of like behavioral stuff. And we've moved things around. We're making better signs. And it's all part of learning what do the students want to eat that we can make. And I've sampled the food and I'm fussy. And the food I've eaten is very good. I would pay for it and buy it if I were in a restaurant.
Yeah, I'm not a big fruit guy. Apples or oranges.
Yeah, but students might not know that they can eat, that fruit is unlimited. Or if they don't see a hummus wrap, that they'll make one for you. And if the tray is empty, it doesn't mean that we don't have it. It might be that, you know, Christine took the last one. It's like when you're at Subway and they run out of tomatoes, they have to go get more. And maybe that's what the person is doing. And some kids are shy. They don't ask. They don't know they can have it. So we're working with teachers, staff, administrators to just educate everyone. It's basic communications.
It's just too bad we can't go back to when collection has their orders.
Well, we've tried that and they, it might work well in one school. The kids changed their mind and it was easier before if you didn't, if you only had one or two options. But when you have a lot, they get up here and see. You know, I signed up for chicken patty, but boy, that chicken Alfredo looks pretty good. I think I'm going to try that.
There's pros and cons.
Yeah, so we'll make it work. And I'm at least happy that we're serving almost 5% more lunches. So that's a good thing.
Do they find that there are still kids who bring like bag lunches, their own?
I don't know. I haven't focused on the brown baggers. It's been, I've been, when I've watched, I've been behind the serving line amongst the students.
You know, because some kids are very, you know, extremely fussy or cultural things where they eat, you know, very specific foods.
I think me and Susan will figure out what those kids want.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you'd be surprised that this school, Nazam, thought he'd offer watermelon and that comes on this list a lot. So I think he had, he put out eight melons and he had to go pull them away because it turned into, I don't want to say a mob scene, but everybody was just going wild over the watermelon, so.
Delicious watermelon.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Bob? Public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have President Pro-Town Joe DeLucia.
And do we have a microphone there in the front?
When do I review the microphone?
Well...
I don't hear him well.
You may not be the only speaker, Joe. Okay, I don't have my blurb in front of me, but just give your name and address for the presentation. Please be respectful. This is not a back and forth. We will sit here respectfully, listen to you and we will work on your comment if there's something that we have to do to satisfy your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Joseph A. DeLucia. I am the President of Pro-Town in Orange City Council, 100 Broadway, Norwich, Connecticut. I'll start with a request for the chair. When we saw the data about the pre-K program, I'd just like to suggest that we make sure that that information is communicated to the school building committee so that we know that our EdSpec and your plan moving forward are aligned before we send projects out to bid. Please, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I would just like to say, first of all, congratulations to each and every one of you on your election and swearing-in ceremony, to the members, to the chair, the vice chair and the secretary. Welcome to the show that never ends. Your, I will say to you that your city council liaisons will be appointed officially at the next city council meeting, which will be next Monday night. And I would just like to highlight the fact that we have much work to do together. This two-year term is going to be quite busy. We have many irons in the fire. And to that end, I offer my collaboration, whether it be school budget ad hoc committee, whether it be the school budget in general, and whether it be the school building committee moving forward. I am looking forward to working with all of you to write the next chapter for the residents of the city of Norwich. And with that, again, I thank you for your service and I look forward to all that we will do over the next two years. Thank you.
Is there anyone else signed up, Amber?
Yes, Representative Darrell Wilson.
Can you name an address for the record, please?
Good evening, Darrell Wilson, 32nd Street, Norwich, Connecticut. This will be the most dressed down you'll see me, but I get the chance to be in a relaxed role tonight. Again, I serve as your State Representative of the 46th District, but I don't represent Norwich alone. I represent it with team, delegation members, Representative Kevin Ryan, Representative Doug Dubitsky and our State Senator Kathy Austin. I am here like I did at the beginning to let you know we are here to help. We are here to listen, but most importantly, to advocate on behalf of this board and the city of Norwich, in the state of Connecticut, in the state legislature, doing our job on policies, budget and beyond. As the President Pro-Town has said, there is a lot of work that is to be done over the next two years that we will be also keeping a close eye on, such as the school building project, possible increases in ECS funding and many more things. And so I am an open phone call if you have any concerns on policies or anything that comes up in the state. One thing that I do very well, um, is sending out the information to our acting superintendent and her team so that they know exactly what things are coming through, uh, to our city and that impact each and every family, student, and the staff here. Uh, one thing you will notice is we will have a lot of, uh, community conversations and connections. The one that, um, Mr. Sipinski, um, highlighted is just one of twelve groups doing great work with our students here in the city of Norwich. We were able to give over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out to organizations this fiscal year from the state of Connecticut to do the work that is necessary for our students, and we will continue to do that. I am, again, I take suggestions on how we can make things better, but most importantly, we are here to listen and do the work. We are getting ready to, on our listening tour, um, as we get ready for the short session. And this session starts in February, so we've got a lot of work to do, uh, in a very short amount of time. And so as their concerns come up over budgets, construction, and all of those things, get them to us in a timely manner so that we can, uh, handle them because, uh, May comes very quick and we wanna make sure that we address it before the session closes. Thank you again, and I am a phone call away.
Okay, is there anyone else for public comment? Is there anyone else who wish to speak for public comment? And you, and for the final time, anyone else for public comment? Hearing no one, public comment is now closed. Okay, we go on to item six, which will be the new business first reads of policy updates. Uh, I believe we just, uh, you read those on your own.
Correct, and then next month, the board will, uh, hold on.
Right, so, uh, take your time to read those over. And then we proceed this month to unfinished business. Action item seven point one, approval of update to policy five-one-four-one point zero-two-point-one, policy regarding wellness. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the updates to policy number five-one-four-one point zero-two-point-one, policy regarding wellness, student wellness.
Okay, uh, motion by Kevin Sitani. Second by Greg Perry. Any comments, just take a moment to read the, uh, the policy.
I just had a quick question, and maybe Kevin, you can help. This policy, um, has a lot of, um, uh, recommendations relates to nutrition as well as physical activities, but there's nothing, at least from what I've read, being mentioned in regards to mental health. And we know that's a big issue that, like now that we're facing. I don't know if we have another policy that we are updating or that we are currently working on that's addressing, uh, some of the mental health wellness issues.
So as far as I know, we, um, there, there is no specific policy that addresses, um, mental health, that spells it out, um, completely. But, um, we can be able to, um, you know, look, look into it, um, and, you know, and see if you can be able to, uh, address that unless, I'm mistaken, but I went back to the other policy and I do not see anything that specifically dives into, yeah, student, um, mental, uh, health, so.
It may be just a, uh, a mislabeling possibly of the, of the policy in more regards cuz it's referring, if you see the, the legal definitions at the bottom with the legal references, it refers specifically to nutrition standards, uh, the Red Ribbon Pass program from the state of Connecticut. So it basically has to do more with nutrition standards than
Than wellness.
Then, then, than overall wellness of a, of a student. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, so let's vote on this, so.
Not sure what the next step then is, does this go back? Or do we rename the policy as it's then, or?
If, if that is the wish of the entire board, we, we can do that. Yes, um, you know, but, so, I mean, yeah, if, if that's, if that's the, yeah, the wish of the board, we could, uh, table it. Wait until, uh, next month, uh, we'll bring it back to the policy committee and then we will refine it, uh, even more, you know, uh, yeah.
I mean, I guess my question is if, if currently meets the laws and guidelines in terms of nutrition, then renaming it is fine. And, and whether or not we need to either talk to council in terms of like, what are some of the best practices about developing like a mental health policies that addresses a student's wellbeing as well as our, our staff and administrators, that is a separate question, so. But I'm open to other way.
Yeah, I, I think they, they call it wellness cuz, uh, that's sort of what follows state and federal guidelines for
Nutrition.
Right, for, for, they call, instead of nutrition standards, they call it wellness. So I think we would have to probably come up with a separate policy if we're going to address mental health issues.
That, that's fine if that's how it's called. I'm fine with moving forward with that ad is, but I would still love the policy committee to work on something specifically that addresses.
So there isn't currently a policy dealing with, uh, mental health?
I don't believe so, no.
There's a few that touch on it, there's not a specific mental health policy. It's within the Safe School Climate Plan, within, uh, suicide prevention, within a few areas. It's, it's touched on, but there's not a specific mental health policy.
So there'd be an overall umbrella for all of that, that's the question.
I can check the model policies from shipment.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, but I, I think in order to, uh, to be consistent, to, to keep the wellness title that triggers, you know, everything and it goes with, uh, state and federal guidelines, that they can, they would call these nutrition standards wellness. Okay, um, so let's bring this to a vote, uh, all who approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? Let's see unanimous. Okay, action item seven point two, approval of updates to policy nine-two-seven-one, Code of Ethics.
Kevin Sitani, motion to approve the updates to policy number nine-two-seven-one, Code of Ethics.
Christie Dostasio, second the motion.
Okay, motion made by Kevin, seconded by Christine. Take a moment to look it over. I think this policy has to deal mainly with, um, financial interest of board members. Any other discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? It passes unanimous. Next item, seven point three, approval of updates to policy nine-three-two-zero, Code of Ethics, uh, no. I'm sorry. I hit the wrong thing. Update for officers.
Kevin Sitani, motion to approve updates to policy number nine, nine-three-two-zero, uh, officers.
I second.
And I think this was just a, um, renaming, it used to be called meetings.
Correct.
And it's just laying out the, the officers.
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any nays? And it is unanimous. And the final item, uh, seven point four, updates to policy nine-two-two-one, filling vacancies on the board. Uh, could I have a motion, please? Okay.
I'll second that.
Made by Ella, seconded by Heather. Yeah, it's, any discussion on this? Read it over quickly.
I just got a quick question, since there's not, there's no timeline, um, included, and I, I think it's fine if that's the intent, but it don't want a vacancy to exist for like two to three months without it being filled. So right now, it doesn't state in terms of like when, um, person would need to, you know, submit their resignation and so forth. And so it doesn't need to be that detailed, but it just stated now. Someone could decide to leave their post for like six, nine months and unless they officially resign, yeah, they said, at least that's how I'm reading this.
Well, thi- this is not necessarily vacancy on the board, it's a vacancy in the officer positions.
This is for board also.
This is for board also.
Just early as possible, it's the only timeline that's there.
Yeah, well, there is some operation with, uh, state law and also with, uh, the city charter too concerning filling of, uh, say if a board member resigns or, uh, whatnot, fulfilling that vacancy. And then there are certain election guidelines too. If it's within so many months of an election, you actually have to wait for an election or appointment by, uh, I believe, uh, we're appointed by the city council in case of a vacancy.
Is it possible to reference or include some of that language here? Or a way for someone to just, I know it says charter city of Norwich, but where exactly that could be found, I found in the city charter or state law?
Well, it does say chapter five, section one C. At the very bottom, where it says legal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any nays? Again, unanimous. And that moves us on to committee reports. Budget expenditure and ad hoc, we have not started the budget, well, Bob, as preliminary figures. Nothing to share yet. And so the ad hoc wouldn't meet until after the budget committee's meeting. There are no ongoing negotiations, uh, policy committee.
So we met, uh, this past, um, oh, sorry. Yeah, we, we met, um, on December fourth, uh, the meeting overall went well. The policies that are up for first read for next month has been provided. There were six, uh, policies that we went over, but only five is presented because the sixth one, um, where, you know, the committee decided to, uh, have it, uh, checked, and that is the, um, the employment and student teacher checks. So that's, that's gonna be reviewed and then it'll be presented for next month. So, but for, for us, for tonight, it's the, uh, the five policies out of the six.
In the school, uh, building committee, um, that, uh, I attended, that was a Zoom meeting and basically all there was, was to approve a couple of bills that were due. Progress report, that things are progressing. Various, uh, topographical reports were coming in about the, especially the challenging green bill site. And different configurations are being tried for that, possibly a two or even a three-story building because of the severe slope there. Anything on integrated charter day, day charter?
Uh, yeah, I'm a little bit behind, they meet next week, um, so the last meeting was three weeks ago. As was mentioned by, uh, Superintendent Susan Sard, the director has met with her and they're working on, working together on a number of issues. Plus issues have been discussed which are improving in IDCS, there's still some problems there. Just before the Thanksgiving break, they had their annual bread feast and caring and sharing. It was well-attended this year. The students at IDCS collected almost four thousand pounds of food to donate to St. Vincent's Hall. Service learning projects are being identified for the twenty-twenty-four year, um, right now. The upcoming events and things that are going on when they pick up their kids. Uh, there is a new online store to purchase IDCS swag that is now open, you can get to it through the website. And student, like conferences were just completed this past Friday and a new term has begun.
And let's see, the, uh, the NFA, I know the NFA won't be meeting until, I believe, the twenty-third of January, then they don't have a December meeting. So that report probably won't be until February because we have our, our meeting earlier in January. And, uh, I've sent out, uh, sent around the committee signup sheets. The most important one is the, the ad hoc, um, the city council is looking for the, the makeup of the, the actual people who are involved going to be sitting with the ad hoc committee so that they can prepare for, uh, the meeting schedules and whatnot for that and who's gonna be participating. Okay, board reports? Kevin, you have something?
Yes, uh, recently on Sunday, um, and with Carleen, Darrell was there, and, uh, council members, Swarinjit Singh, uh, attended the first ever international gala over in Franklin Street, I forgot the, uh, the name, uh, the number. But it was, it was the first ever international gala where individuals from different, uh, cultural backgrounds convened and, um, as a board member and as, uh, as a private citizen attending that event, it just shows the great diversity the city of Norwich, uh, has and, uh, the importance that people who, you know, say Norwich is not, uh, very, you know, not much of a vibrant city compared to New York City, you know, the, the big cities surrounding, uh, uh, our state. But that But that, that night showed a lot. And it's compelling, and I appreciate Lead and Mosaic Coalition for working together to get this event up and going, and I look forward to seeing it again next year. So that's that. And I do have a speech before we adjourn, but unless any other board member has something to say, I could go ahead and read this. So this speech is entitled, Educational Excellence for All: Investing in the Future of Norwich. Today, I want to underscore a truth that transcends individual interests, the intrinsic value of education and the imperative to invest in it, regardless of personal backgrounds or circumstances. In this room, we find ourselves united by the shared belief that education is the bedrock of our society. It is not merely a privilege for those with children in our schools. It is a collective moral obligation that shapes the future of our community and the world beyond. Education is the cornerstone of progress, a gateway to opportunity, and the key to unlocking the full potential of each and every individual. Our educators, the unsung heroes of our community, dedicate their lives to molding the minds of the next generation. Their impact extends far beyond the confines of the classroom, influence the trajectory of countless lives. Today, let us collectively express our deepest gratitude to the teachers, the mentors, and the guiding lights who tirelessly nurture the minds of our youth. I would also like to acknowledge the Acting Superintendent and the dedicated administrators who work diligently to ensure, ensure the smooth operation of our educational system. Their commitment to fostering an environment that fosters learning, innovation, inclusivity deserves our appreciation and support. Now, some may wonder why invest in education when they do not have children within the school system? The answer lies in the broader understanding that a thriving educational system benefits everyone. It produces informed citizens, stimulates economic growth, and fosters a sense of community pride. A well-educated populace is an asset that pays dividends in the form of a vibrant and resilient society. Investing in education is not a short-term expense, but a long-term investment in the prosperity of our community. It is an investment in the future doctors, engineers, scientists, artists, and leaders who will shape the destiny of Norwich. It is in the investment in a future where our youth are equipped with the skills, critical thinking, and knowledge to navigate an ever-evolving world. Let us commit to providing our schools with the resources they need to offer a world-class education to every child regardless of their backgrounds or circumstances. Let us recognize that investing in education, we are sowing the seeds of a brighter, more equitable future for all. I implore each of you, both within the Board of Education and our wider community, to recognize the profound impact of education on our collective wellbeing. Let us stand together, shoulder to shoulder, and support a robust educational system that will empower generations to come. Remember, when we collectively invest in our schools, our children will do well. When our children do well, our community will do well. Our time and commitment to the enduring cause of education are invaluable. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
I have to think quickly. I just want to say kudos to our adult education staff. A few weeks ago, there was a health fair that Haitian Community Center was organizing, and I saw a couple of them, and one of them was like heavily pregnant and still decided to show up on a Saturday morning. So, thank you.
She just finally left today.
She did. Just wanted to thank you. That's it.
Okay, anything else?
While we're, while we're doling out everything, I just wanted to thank our Inter Superintendent for handling everything that she has taken on, and we've appeared to have had a very smooth transition and no complaints. So you obviously are doing.
And kudos on the surprise day off.
Oh, jeez.
Luckily, Norwich wasn't hurt too badly. And hey, we all understand that the lights weren't working, the traffic lights, so it was more important kids stay safe than be in the streets. I just want to say happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy holidays to all. And hope to see you at our January meeting. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Ready and second.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you.